Everybody please rise. I'm gonna salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Yeah.
Mr. Decodo?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Ms. Dela?
Here.
Seven present.
I think we have to say, I think many of us have colds, but I think Mr. Dela has a worse one. Okay. Uh, thank you. All right, under special audit business, we have a spotlight excellence from the Pine Arts Musical Group. Madam Superintendent, do you want to give us, tell us what we have here?
Yes, thank you. I'm very excited to see our students here and some of our staff here this evening. I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Desmond to introduce our spotlights on excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Principal Wendy Crocker-Roberge is here for the Pine Arts. If she would like to come up and just introduce, there were several staff members that were involved in directing this musical, and if she could introduce them, and then a little bit about the students that are here tonight?
Certainly, thank you for having us. Every year, the Pine Arts does a fall musical, and it's a junior version of a large production, and it involved, this year, 59, our largest cast ever, 59 students in seventh and eighth grade, on two stages in the Pine Arts Cafeteria. Our director, Mr. Rose, is here, our musical director, Mr. Jones, and our choreographer, Ms. Urbine, Katie Urbine, and up in the balcony is our lighting director, Erin Hebert, and there's no better way to understand how wonderful the children are than to give you a tiny little dose of what they did, so we've got one little musical song for you, just a few minutes. So, introducing Jack Crabtree, Ethan T., and Jealousy Mercado, the stars of High School Musical Junior.
And can they come up close to the mics so we can, our TV audience can be aware? Do you want to turn those mics around?
Let's put you in a better position, maybe come over here this way.
But we need a mic.
They are, they are very loud, too.
No, I just wanna make sure that, no, we have a TV audience, and I wanna make sure the TV audience.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yo, welcome back, all you crazy Wildcats. This is Jack Scott, the Velvet Fog of East High, coming at you with the homeroom 411 morning announcements. This year's Science Decathlon finals are coming up, so see Taylor, learning curve McKessey, for more skinny on the hooey. All for now, peeps.
I can't sing.
Sorry, guys.
I can't sing.
Gabriella? Me either.
They're all looking at us.
I will, you will.
Living in my own world, didn't understand that anything can happen, take a chance. I never believed in what I couldn't see. I never opened my heart to all the possibilities. I know that something has changed, never felt this way, and right here tonight, this could be the start of something new. It feels so right to be here with you, oh. And now, looking in your eyes, I feel in my heart, the start of something new.
Oh, no, I forgot, I have to go, New Year's thing.
Hurry, put your phone number in, I'll do it, too.
I had such a great time with you.
Me, too. It was awesome!
It was like a dream!
I made a New Year's resolution to call and ask her out. This year, I know it's gonna happen, gonna happen for me. I didn't know it before, but now it's easy to see. Oh, it's so easy to see. That it's the start of something new. It feels so right to be here with you, oh. And now, I can reach the skies, I feel in my heart, that it's the start of something new. It feels so right to be here with you, oh. And now, I finally realize, I feel in my heart, the start of something new. Whoa, the start of something new. Whoa, the start of something new. Whoa, the start of something new. Wow!
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job. If we have any more show, anything else? This makes for a good meeting.
I'd ask the Assistant Superintendent Desmond to share with us our next spotlight. We have two good news stories tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Ed Foster, who is the Sullivan School principal. He is here to talk a little bit about an award that a Sullivan School student received, Madison Coza, and it was the Roald Dahl Magnemos- Magnemos? Challenge, but if you wanna come up, Mr. Foster, that would be great.
Thank you. Madison's talents are with the written words, so I'll be presenting for her tonight. "Have you ever wondered what a unicorn might say if it's sick?" wrote Madison, 12-year-old Sullivan middle school student. "I have, but I don't want to, I don't have to wonder anymore. What followed was a bug-filled sneezes that puked out purple polka dots, ice cream sundaes, etc. Every bit as zany as Roald Dahl's finest op- in, his finest, and author of perhaps the best known for creating Willy Wonka." Madison is a Sullivan middle school student, recently won the golden ticket in Willy Wonka's Imaginormous Challenge. She wrote a creative 100-word idea that won her a trip to New York City and a visit to Dylan's Candy Bar over the summer. Madison's story was selected from over 50,000 entries, and there are only five winners. As part of a prize at the Sullivan, she won the Roald Dahl Library for the School and Teaching Resources, valued at over $500, which we are using currently. Also, she's one of the Sullivan's first-quarter high honor winners, had 90% or higher in all subjects, and A's in conduct and effort. Pleasure to have in class, all the teasers report, and she's a proud member of the Student Council, so we're very proud of Madison at the school.
Thank you. And there she is. Thank you, Mrs. Mason. Like to say something? Might just say hello?
No. You gotta tell us everything with the written word, so we love that.
Congratulations.
Yes, indeed.
Very proud of you, thank you. All right, that concludes, any more on this spotlight?
We could do this all night, but that's it for tonight. Thank you so much for coming out.
All right, could I have a motion adjourned? Okay. Next, we need a motion to accept and place in file the November 7th and the November 14th minutes of the Lowell School Committee meeting. I need a motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Decodo. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, now we have permission to enter. Madam Superintendent, is there any issues here that have to be discussed?
Yes, these are just, apologize. So, it's for student transportation, and also for some additional speech and language support for a student.
Yeah, we're all set. By Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty, thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Dela?
Yes.
Seven Y's approved.
Next, we have memorials. First is Anna Sophia S. Selenian, Lowell High School student. Next is Jack Spignacy, father of Christine Adams, behavior specialist. Maria Olympia Mesa, mother of Maria Veja, Lowell High School dean. Joseph Lynch, father of Sue Ravius, Shaughnessy School teacher. And John Karen, father of Ann Murphy, retired Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services. And Patty Myers, STEM District Support Specialist. Please back into chambers. Next, we have motions. The first motion is by Mr. Nutter, requests update from the city manager on the status of fire code violations, sanitary code violations concerns, and if any of the safety issues noted in the Collins Report have been addressed. I need a second on this motion by Ms. Martin, Mr. Nutter.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the motion speaks for itself, I mean, we were, you know, we've been informed of several fire code violations at, you know, different schools. They had the, you know, special meeting with the Board of Health regarding the sanitation issue at the high school, which we've had a little update on today. I know that there were some other schools, but the thing that concerns me especially is the Collins Report, which was given out in July, and has it pointed out, you know, school dude records include a remarkable number of work order requests relating to doors and locking mechanisms that don't work. And given the nationwide concern about school safety, it is unacceptable to have doors that do not lock properly, or emergency exit doors that do not open, or otherwise non-functional. So, you know, for the safety of our students and staff, I'd like to get an update on all of these, you know. We keep hearing that everything, you know, that last night, I think it was brought up about the custodians being responsible for the outside of the schools and the grounds. And, you know, let's not forget, it is the council who is responsible to maintain our schools, which they've done a poor job of over the years. So, let's see if any of these issues have been addressed.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, I bet? Okay, thank you. Next, we have another motion by Mr. Nutter, schedule a series of finance subcommittee meetings at 5:00 PM before the next three school committee meetings, meeting to review process failures in our finance department, and what processes and procedures have been put in place to prevent the financial fiasco we have been left with. I need a second on this by Ms. Martin, Mr. Nutter.
Again, we know the budget is an ongoing issue and problem, and the superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, in my opinion, have done an outstanding job only to face more issues every time we turn around. We will, hopefully, finally, by the time we start this next meeting, have a financial audit report that we have been waiting for, and so we can use that as a basis to start, but we need to go over to see what we were lacking and what we have put in place, and I know that the Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent have put many things in place, and the public has a right to know what we didn't have and what we now have to make sure this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, and I just wanna add, I think this is really important, and for those of us who, you know, need to really understand what are the new systems, what are systems that we had before that weren't being implemented, that are now being, you know, rebrought back, I think it's important information for the committee to have as well, and I think it's an ongoing effort. We're always looking at ways to improve, so it's a good way to start, so I definitely support this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, a motion by Mr. Dela and Mr. Hoey, it does need a second, request the city council instruct the city auditor to provide the members of the school committee with quarterly reports on the money spent in each line item, or did I skip one?
That's okay.
You skipped one of Jerry's.
I would've made you come back to it.
Well, let me go through, and I will come back, okay? I'm in, I'm in the groove right now. I need to spend more than $10 in glasses. Well, we have this from Mr. Dela and Mr. Hoey, request the city council instruct the city auditor to provide the members of the school committee with quarterly reports on the money spent in each line item of the school department budget throughout the fiscal year. Mr. Hoey?
Thanks, Mayor. I know Dominic asked me to give him a second on this a little while back, and I told him I would. I also found out that, I just think it's another layer to help the CFO. I just think, if I'm right, the auditor, I think he reports directly to the city council? Is that, is that the way it is? So, I think it's a good motion, I just think it's someone else that could help us. He, to me, he's, he's someone that's not on anybody's side, he's just watching the money, so I just feel it's a good idea, and I think it was a good motion to be put in place, just so we get, he only has to help us like four times a year to keep up with a report on all our spending, so that's all. I just think it's a good motion, and I know Dominic can't say much, but he's the one that was, the one that came up with that, not me. Thank you.
I think we should.
I want to say so much, but I can't say. I think it's a good motion, because I think it's necessary, a second information for us to see and for the public to see. That's all I can say right now, but I can't, it's, my voice is killing me.
Thank you, Mr. Dela, thank you, we understand. Anybody else want to, I'm sorry, Ms. Nutter, and then Mr. Decodo?
Through you to the Assistant Superintendent. You can run the same Munis report that the auditor runs, correct?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's a great motion only because it will reassure you that the data that I'm providing is the same as what the, the city auditor can provide. I think that's my point, that the numbers won't change whether it's from me or them, so it's a great idea. I can provide it to you on a monthly basis, as soon as we confirm this budget, then I would give you a year-to-date, monthly projection on how much has been spent, with detail behind it if you need, so when the auditor comes, and if they provide you with a quarterly report, that would only reinforce what I'm stating.
I also think it needs to be, the request to the auditor needs to be defined, because as of right now, there is a quarterly report already supplied by the auditor to the city council, which includes the numbers for the school committee. That's in that report, it's published quarterly, when the city council gets a quarterly report. However, the auditor, in the Munis report he runs, the budget is broken down totally different than the way we vote on the budget. It's broken down per school, and so trying to match up that per school to what we have, you're not gonna be, it's gonna be very, very difficult, so the request needs to be defined to the auditor how you want that report presented.
Excuse me, could I make a suggestion that we have the auditor report to one of your subcommittee meetings, so that can be discussed? It's a good motion in a sense, the more information you have, the better off we are, period. So, but the thing is, you're correct, there are different ways of presenting that information, and so we can have the information specific to the school committee's needs and separate it out. That, with your approval? Mr. Hoey?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. I'm pretty sure, I've never done it, but I think the public, the public can just walk in and ask the auditor for any type of printout, to see numbers, so that's all. It's just something I think that will help out, Ms. Turner, not, nothing that, I don't think you're doing a bang-up job, it's just that the more help you have, and it'll be easier for me to make votes on things like that, so thank you.
Mr. Decodo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we make a friendly amendment to that, to say that we would like it to coincide with our CFO report, so that they can, can be compared and looked at? Could we do that?
Let's hear from the Assistant Superintendent, who has their hand up.
I think that's an excellent idea. When you run a Munis report, you are allowed to sort according to what you want, so if you wanted it to run it by school so that the schools see their spending, that's one way, but you could also run it by DOE function code, which is how our budget is built, superintendent's office, instruction, employee fringe, so you can, and he's well, he will, he would know how to do that, so his data could match my data, which would match the budget.
Mr. Dela? I'm sorry, Mr. Decodo, are you all set?
Yep, thank you.
Apologize.
As the motion says, by line item, so I think that's pretty much coincided with what we do, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what the motion said, line items.
All set, for discussion? Thank you. I think we have another motion. By Mr. Nutter, vote to request the mayor's file a motion requesting the city council direct the city manager to break out cost transportation, adult education from cash contributions provided by the city in the budget, and not act on any council request until it is voted on. Mr.?
I need a second on that, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I was eager to get back to it.
I thank you for that. Last January, this school committee voted to request the same thing, and nothing was done, we received the, we received the budget in the same format. I think it's a little disingenuous when the manager or the CFO sit there and say that we gave $15 million in cash to the school department, when in fact, seven and a half million is for transportation and adult education, which doesn't count to net school spending, and we can't use that for our operational budget. So, that's why we need, I'm trying a different way to do the same thing I tried in January, and this time would be ask you to put in a motion and have the council approve it, and I know over the past couple weeks, I've heard the council ask you to have the school committee vote on several things. Well, you know what, let's vote on this first, and, you know, we asked for it a while ago, the public needs to see that, you know, we get approximately 6.5% of property taxes as our operational budget. That's all we get. The bulk of our funding comes from Chapter 70, and when the city reduced us this year from 18 million to 15 million, and our transportation costs went up, our operational cash budget went down, and so we need to make sure that the people know that fact. Thank you.
No, thank you, I'll make sure that we get these two in there. Thank you. Any further discussion of that matter? All right, next, we had a All right, next, we had a subcommittee, and the report was already taken care of. That was the approval of the minutes of the meeting for November 1st. We're all set with that, correct?
No, you need to have it accepted as reported.
Okay. We didn't do that. Okay. So, I just need, the report was given, I just need a motion to accept this report of progress by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Thank you. Now, we have reports of the superintendent. Update on Mr. Dakota's motion for 4418 regarding salvage musical equipment. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. This is a report provided by Sharon Clark, the fine arts academic chair at Lowell High School. Unfortunately, she was unable to be here this evening. It's quite a detailed report, an inventory of all of the materials here. If there is something specific you would like to have answered, head of school Bastid is here. She can take the notes and bring them back, and we can have them answered for you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I looked it over very carefully, and I thought we would have to really give high praise to Dr. Clark for a yeoman's job on putting this together for us, really an extensive piece of information. I think it'll only serve in a positive way that we potentially could have different schools have access to equipment that exists and probably not being used in certain schools, that it could be used in other schools. And I think that's going to be a really great thing to have happen. And so, again, kudos to Dr. Clark on that, and thank you very much.
All set? Any further discussion in that matter? Okay, thank you. Next is response to Ms. Martin's motion of 32118 regarding human resources compliance orders. Ms. Martin?
Oh.
I'm sorry, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. This is a report provided by the Human Resources Service, Inc. They were the ones that were contracted to provide us with the audit for the human resource department. They are out of country at this time, but they wanted to hold fast to their November promise date. So, we're providing this to the committee at this time, but we would entertain that they will be returning to Massachusetts on January 7th, and they are available to present at the January 16th school committee, or if it's the wish of the committee to do it in a personnel subcommittee. But they provided some detailed information, including survey results, and some, some good recommendations for us to consider.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I agree, there's a great deal of information certainly in the report that I think we'll want to discuss. I would recommend, I think it's kind of hefty enough that we'd be better served to have them present at the subcommittee, the personnel subcommittee. I think a January timeframe is fine, so long as we can get it wrapped up, you know, before the end of January, because once February and March hit, anything we want to implement from this, we're going to need to include in our budget conversations. But I think if we could invite them to present to the personnel subcommittee, and then certainly they can return when that subcommittee reports out to the full committee if there are any questions to follow up. But I think that would, given the, you know, again, it has a great deal of information in it, so I think that would be the most effective way to.
Do you want to make a motion?
I would, I would make that in the form of a motion.
Motion, and seconded by Ms. Doherty. Thank you. Yes?
I'd just like to say something about that. I read it twice. I need to read things twice. I'm really impressed after I read it. I think considering how much we had a staff shortage, let's say, for the HR office, I've been kind of, to me, it's the second biggest thing on the school committee to worry about, the human resources. And when I looked at that report, 95% of what I read seems to show me that our staff, I don't know them all by name, but since I've been here, and it's almost three years, and after you read what they say they need for help, and we all knew that, that they were down some secretaries, and one year, a couple of years back there, they, they had to get 219 teachers and paras filled. Debbie Jarvis is one of the secretaries that's coming up to my head right now, but I'm actually fascinated by how good of a job they've done with very little help. It's one of the best things I've seen in a long time, this audit. I can't wait to see the next audit. But I'd say about 5% of that HR report that I read had something to do with, that I read there was a few disgruntled people in there, and it's a very small amount, but it's still over basically who we hired in the past to be the AD. And when you read it, you can see the negativity, but it's very little bit considering all the issues we had with HR. So, anybody that's been working for the HR department, to me, in the past two years and twelve, almost three years, I just want to say thank you for what you did. You held us pretty tight. I didn't realize we were in such good shape. I thought it was a lot worse. So, thank you again, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I think there was, I have not delved into it quite as closely as my colleague, and there were certainly things that jumped out at me that were very positive. I think we have an exceptional group of employees, both our teaching staff, our administrators, and our, at all levels of the system. But I think there are some real areas that we need to focus on for improvement. One that jumped out to me was there wasn't formalized performance evaluation tools or systems for a lot of different important categories, custodians, security, clerks, technical positions. That's item number seven on page 23, if anyone's interested. That's one area that jumped out at me. I think there are a lot of other growth opportunities and improvement opportunities for us. I know for me, one of my concerns with HR was around the whole screening process, how our screening committees, our community groups can feel really involved and empowered in the system. And so, I really, I look forward to having the presentation, being able to do a much deeper dive into some of these areas where we can continue to grow and improve. Thank you.
Mr. Hoi?
One more thing that I forgot that I read that really made me feel good about the school committee that I'm sitting on, is when we talk about diversity, if you read the report, they talked about the issue that I think the HR department and this school committee pushed was our paraprofessionals. And I think if we continue to look at the paras, that's where we're going to find some teachers with the upcoming shortages of teachers we might have. So, I just think the HR and all of us deserve a little bit of a, you know, an attaboy, because it's not all negative over here. We do a pretty good job. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Any further? All right. Next, we have a motion by Ms. Martin for 426 regarding Lowell High School emergency evacuation. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I reached out to the maker of the motion, Ms. Martin, to ask her permission if we could, because she's been waiting for this for a while, to bring this to the floor, and she graciously agreed. And I want to thank head of school, Marion Bastid, for providing the report and some after-action planning. The head of school is here if anyone has any specific questions relative to the report.
Ms. Martin?
You know, I just say, I appreciated getting the information. I think I had mentioned when I had initially made the motion, my real area of concern was around special education students and kind of ensuring that, that that population is paid appropriate, you know, attention to, which my sense from reading the report is that that was recognized as an issue and was addressed, so that we have a better system in place now, which I certainly appreciate. And I think, you know, moving forward, it is, you know, the idea that the Songas Arena, which is our go-to, yes, has other stuff going on. So, you know, there's, it can be a challenge, I recognize, when there's a home show being set up that you can't bring 3,500 students tramping into the, into the building. So, I do think that that's kind of a real world concern that we need to keep in mind. But I was, I was certainly satisfied that the attention was paid where I had, where I had heard some concern. So, I appreciate your work and your work at the high school to address that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Mr. Mada, Nada, I'm sorry, regarding the Blizzard Bags. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. This was a motion that brought forward for us to investigate the Blizzard Bags. It was something that Ms. Desmond and her team worked diligently on last year and have had conversations with the union about. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Desmond to share with you our latest update and your consideration for a vote.
Thank you. So, the Blizzard, the Blizzard Bags, there's an example of a possible Blizzard Bag for grade one here. We have examples for grade one through eight. They're not perfected. We want to make sure that this is the direction the committee wants to go for the winter before we, although we want to call it canceled school bag, only because we've learned over the last year that we could be having all kinds of issues that might result in a no school. So, the idea would be that this only would happen after the 185th day, which is the schedule that exists. We would create two Blizzard Bags or canceled school day bags. There would be an expected due date somewhere around May 15th. Originally, we were thinking June 1st, but we've altered it a bit. We've been in discussion with the unions, and they, they seem very supportive of utilizing Blizzard Bags. We are asking that there be some time each teacher provides outside of a school day so that families and students could access support if they're struggling with any part of the Blizzard Bags. And as I said, we're, and then we are also working with the high school to come up with what would be the solution there. It would probably be more similarly aligned to some of the summer assignments that would be provided in content areas for students who are in an honors program or in a high honors program or in a college program versus every individual class having a different assignment. And that's work that head of school and myself and some department chairs need to come together to work on. So, at this point, this is the shell or the outline, and if this is the direction that the committee would like to move forward for this winter, we will finish up this work. So, I guess that's, that's kind of what we're looking for right now, is this the direction we want to go, and should we continue? Because it is a lot of work to pull all of this together. The Blizzard Bags would be available online. They'd also be printed at the school level if families want a printed copy. We have several of the reading materials available through student usernames and passwords to Reading A to Z and other programs that we purchase licenses for that would allow students to listen to the story if they were not able to read the story themselves. And our, we would also work with our special education staff to differentiate materials as well. But again, before we continue on that path, I wanted to make sure that that was the direction the committee wanted to move.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question again, getting back to the high school. Is that kind of a work in progress at this point? And is it, is the plan to be by individual teachers or by department and course level? Is that what your goal is going to be? So that there's a standard that everybody taking this class will have that kind, that Blizzard Bag? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Is it by department?
Yes, by, well, and course, and course level, right? Yes.
All set? Mr. Hoi?
Thank you.
Madam Smut, Rob?
So, what, the thought is that, so in the summer, if a student is going to be, let's say, in high honors English, they have a specific assignment, all students in high honors English. So, that would be the direction we would go versus having to have every teacher meet a different requirement.
Okay. Mr. Hoi?
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Desmond, the only concern I have, I've done some research, I think the Blizzard Bags are a great idea. I think the problem we have to watch out for is it being completed. And that's what I'm getting off a few people. If they're not completed, we could have an absentee problem. So, that's just something I wanted to put in your head, you know, that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Nada?
I want to thank Ms. Desmond and her staff. This is a, you know, a great preliminary report to us. The canceled school bag is definitely better than the Blizzard Bag. We hope we don't have many of those. But this is, you know, this is a lot of work, and the work that's gone into this, and as you say, it doesn't go into effect until we've used, you know, our five days. So, I think this is a great step, taking it so that it's not required to be an online thing, which was, I know, a concern of many originally. I think this is a great effort, and I would make a motion that we proceed with what we've been presented with tonight.
Do you want to hold on? Let every permission will come back to you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I definitely think it's worth moving forward, so I, and I appreciate the work that's gone in so far. I particularly appreciated the frequently asked questions, because I thought that answered almost every single question I could come up with, so that was very helpful. And I do think it's the attendance issue that we need to be aware of. I had actually thought that we, that it was presupposed that you had to hit that, which was, I think, the first question, the 80% mark. So, that must be some kind of old wives' school tale that's floating around. But I had always thought that was the case, too. But that being said, the ability for these to not impact, negatively impact our attendance is going to be something that we're going to need to pay particular attention to. And the lack of an online requirement, I also think, is very helpful in terms of making this universally available to all of our, all of our students. So, I think certainly moving forward, it's worth, it's worth the continuing investigation. And if we can have it in place for this winter, that would really be extremely helpful. Thanks.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I just had a question in terms of the timing. So, let's say we know we're going to get hit with a big snowstorm. The day before, the day before the school would be canceled, would students be able to take packets home? But what happens if school is canceled the day of? There's no advance notice. So, students would not necessarily be able to get, they wouldn't be able to get hard copies unless somebody traveled to the school. They could get it online. So, the idea is you may not be able to do the work the day that school is canceled. You can do the work at some other point. And could we coordinate? I don't know if the public library tends to stay open when we're closed for school. Maybe not, I don't know. So, just to clarify, am I understanding it correctly? She's going to answer. Thank you.
Yes, yes. So, there were some things to consider. So, before digging into this work, we, we looked at other ways that this has been structured in other districts across Massachusetts. One of the things that was notable was that there have been instances where there is no electricity, and so, students are, have not been able to necessarily complete the work on the day that there's no school. And having this open timeframe where if someone struggles with getting it done on the day, there's still opportunity. Plus, we, we are looking to offer time outside of the school day, either before or after school, by the classroom teachers, so that if any kiddo cannot do the work independently to help alleviate the attendance issue as well, they could come after school or before school and get some support so that they can complete the work. Because it's really the time on learning. It's not necessarily the exact day. So, if we can get that time on learning, that would be wonderful. If we know, oftentimes, we know if there's a storm being predicted that's eight or 10 inches, we can certainly give this out ahead of time and say, if there's no school, please complete this. But again, the date would be May 15th for all the work to be in. Teachers would have a checklist so that they can record who has submitted it and who has not, and try to support students getting the work done.
If I could, just one follow-up. Have we thought at all about what the cost impact might be? Because if you're going to be making multiple copies of assignments for every school, and you know, perhaps not every student, because some of our students will be able to access it online. But I know we've had big hits to our copying budget, our repair for our copy machines, and each school is dealing with the challenges of that. So, has cost been factored in at all?
So, we're using So, we're using materials that are already part of our curriculum, so a lot of this is Eureka Math, a lot of it is Reading A to Z, which is what we have in the schools already that we're using. A lot of the investigations from our science kits are here, and so those materials are available already. So, we're trying to do a hybrid of utilizing things that we already have in student workbooks and available to us, so hopefully the impact would not be significant.
Mr. DeCotto, did you have another question?
Yes.
So, now I go back and make the motion to continue and move ahead.
I need the motion to accept the recommendation in the pilot learning packets for the 2018-2019 school year. Made the motion, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Ms. Marius?
Yes.
Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, another response by Mr. Nada, motion of 919 regarding donated technology. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a report provided by Assistant Superintendent Turner, as well as our Technology Department, relative to the motion for requesting administration to report how teacher classroom donated technology can be granted access to school network. And so, our technology staff does recognize that the donations are very beneficial to our teachers and our students as a whole, but we also have to be very careful of their, as they call it, their useful life. And so, they put together a recommended minimum requirement guideline for our leaders to review and for our staff to review as far as accepting these donations. And they also put together a list of actual items that could be used. Up to this point, they have, they have done everything that they possibly can to support people who've brought in materials that don't necessarily fit these guidelines, but these are for your review and your discussion tonight, and hopefully your voting on this, because what they, what they also recommend is that this policy be annually reviewed, because we know that what we're talking about today, as far as technology, could be outdated tomorrow. And something new and innovative could be on deck. So, so this is just a recommendation for your consideration, and I want to thank Michael Hoppy from the Technology Department. He's here tonight if you have any specific questions.
Mr. Nada.
I just want to thank, that's, it was a very well put together, well thought out, well explained report, especially what you can use, what you can't use, and why. And if we share that with the principals to share with their staff, I think it's certainly beneficial. We appreciate, as you said, all the donations, but we do realize that some of them are outdated or cause an issue. It's exactly what I was looking for, and I thank you all for the effort that went into it.
Any further discussion?
So, move to accept and approve the motion.
For receiving donated technology equipment and the minimum requirement guidelines, need a motion by Mr. Nada, seconded by Mr. DeCotto. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Ms. Marius?
Yes.
Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have Coordinator of Research Testing Assessment Update, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, I just, this is just to inform the committee and really thank the committee for you affording our administration to be able to be creative and look at some current, our budget deficit, and also to look at some current staffing and try to work with the union. I'm happy to inform you that the position that you have in front of you was received, backed, fully executed by the LSAA. This combines the Coordinated Research Data and Analysis position and the vacant database administrator position. I also want to applaud the team and, because today, our SIMS data was certified a day early, and so with no errors, we were, we were very happy for that. So, and that was a team effort, and it was thanks to your support that we were able to get that in.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hoi?
I just want to touch something real quick. I mean, I didn't go through that every word, but I did see where we rank kind of low on what we spend on each child. I noticed other cities that are similar to us, that we rank very low on how much we spend on each child, so I think it's good information, and I thought the report was good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we have enrollment figures, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, this is just your regular enrollment figures from the Family Resource Center.
Okay. Next, we have report on motions.
Again, this is our bimonthly report of motions for your review, and if you have any feedback, I'd be happy to amend anything.
Mr. Nada.
Just a couple of quick questions. Are we on target for a presentation in January on redistricting?
So, we met this week with our business/transportation coordinator and the Family Resource Center coordinator. We'll have a more formal update from them the week of December 14th, and we're, we're working really hard to be on track for that. The transportation person has been reaching out to the University of Massachusetts Lowell and also to MIT to work with their departments and students on algorithms to test our ideas.
Next question, sorry to do this to you, but we, Mr. DeCotto and I had filed a joint motion about looking into working with the Massachusetts School Business Building Authority for some, you know, maintenance that were required. I know that the school committee was criticized after the Collins Report for, you know, not taking advantage of every opportunity to. And so, Mr. DeCotto and I filed a motion to be able to do that. Do we know where we have any cutoff? Can we find out when the cutoff dates are to apply for such things and what may be a few major items we need to continue to try to get some funding for?
So, I actually had a conversation, let me get my dates correct, I think it was either Monday or Tuesday yesterday of this week, with Connor Baldwin, and we're planning to schedule a meeting within the next week to address those.
And finally, one last question. There was, a parent had asked about padding at the Bailey School up on the wall. Has that been, has that been fixed?
I know Ms. Turner's been working with Mr. Underwood, I just saw him in the hallway, but I'll turn it over to her if she has any updates on that.
Yes, Mr. Underwood has been requesting quotes, and as you know, usually, we just have to request the quotes and we could move ahead with just one, as long as we requested it. But due to the lack of funds, we're trying to reach out to as many people as we can to get affordable work. So, but Mr. Underwood did receive two, and he reached out to a couple of others, so we will have that update soon.
Thank you.
Mr. DeCotto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as far as the request to the MSBA, does that have to come from the city council or from us?
It, actually, it should go through the city manager anyways.
Okay, okay.
That's, I mean, just procedurally, along with the superintendent, it is a partnership, but, I mean, we've been made aware of, like, say, heating systems and other things that are problematic in some of the schools. The state has been far more liberal than we've ever anticipated regarding this matter, so it's a good motion. It's money that can be made available to the system, so we should search it out. I know the city manager is just as enthusiastic about doing that because it takes some pressure off of, you know, her table, so to speak. Okay? Well, thank you, it's a good motion. All right, so, any further, yes, Mr. Arti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wonder if we could address, it's actually the first motion on the first page, so maybe it's the oldest. My motion about school side councils, which I made twice in 2017, in January and in March, and I'm just wondering what the delay is, because I know we are mandated by the state to have these school side council.
So, you will have that, and it, you included something about, oh, that's not the one, but there is another one as well that we're putting together with that. There was a request about parent, parent visitations to schools, and so we're waiting for, there are two more schools that still have their parents coming in, so we have everything ready. I think it's going to be the December, the next, the next meeting. If not, that is the following one. We just wanted to make sure we gave it to you complete and we didn't have to come back and...
And I think, just to clarify, what's important to me is that every school page, you know, on our website lists who our school side council members are, when the meetings happen, and then the agenda for those meetings and the minutes. And I specifically mentioned the Pine Arts School because they've been doing this for years. It's an excellent model.
So, we did, just to address that, we did send that out to all of our school leaders, and specifically, the motion and to look at the Pine Arts website. We also met with our webmaster for the district, and he actually went out and handheld and supported schools that needed some support in that. So, I know we've made some great progress in that area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent from 9-1 through 9-8 as a report of progress. I need a motion to accept that by Mr. Nada, seconded by Ms. Martin. We have home education, I need a motion to approve for home education. Madam Superintendent, any questions we should be aware of?
It's just a request from two families for home education.
Yes. Arti, motion to accept, seconded by Mr. DeCotto. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Ms. Marius?
Yes.
Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, next on the new business, we have anticipated changes to, for the approved fiscal year 19 budget. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. I would ask Assistant Superintendent Turner to share with you some of our suggested budget adjustments at this time.
The three focuses that, well, what I would like to focus on are three areas, the budget dilemma, internal controls, and human resource updates and changes. Before I start, I wanted to ask for permission to, I gave you an update on the health insurance piece. We did get additional information on Monday, and I gave you an additional document that was not included on Friday, but I think it's important for me to discuss that tonight since it changes things that are in the report that was submitted on Friday. Okay, great. So, as you know, the budget dilemma, we're trying to close the $2.4 million gap. We identified $1.3 million in suggestions on a report at the previous school committee meeting. We attempted to close the additional $1.1 million, and that is on the attachment that was included in the packet. I'll go through the additional items. The first one is health insurance. This is where the change occurred, and that's what the additional document is. So, as I mentioned to you before, I'm trying to be as transparent and as to the bone as I can with what we give you. I don't want to build in cushions, have additional cuts, and then find out that they were not necessary. So, we're giving you as close as we can to what the actual is on any given day so that we can make the decisions based on now, not what ifs. When I looked at the health insurance, I looked at what we would need as of what the actuals were in Munis. I took the year-to-date health insurance cost, I took the most recent bill, and multiplied that by the seven remaining months, and I attached those documents in here. I gave you the Munis report and a spreadsheet. That made me believe that we would have $150,000 of surplus that we could put into this, in this pool to close the gap. That's what the data said in Munis, as the report shows. However, the CFO, the city CFO, read my report, and luckily, he called on Monday evening and explained that the bill that they provide to us and they, the bill that they charge to our account does not include any dental, and what they have historically done is hit our accounts at the end of the year with $750,000 in dental costs, and it's done in a journal entry form. So, in reality, there's not $150,000 surplus. I printed out some samples in the new report I gave you today to show that this is not part of any history that I would see in Munis except for journal entry form at year end. He also explained that, he explained in previous years that this is how they do it, and so it should be built into the budget, but it wasn't. So, unfortunately, I have to add that to this spreadsheet, not get a surplus.
Mr. Arti.
So, could I just ask a clarification? So, you thought we'd have $150,000 health insurance that we could help to offset the debt, the deficit, but instead, we owe another, we have to come up with another $600,000 for dental? Because that bill's going to come at the end of the year, and there's no money in the budget for it.
Yes, absolutely. So, for the, as you know, each page that I go through, I back up everything that I do so that we have a paper trail. When I looked at the health insurance cost in that line item, I reached out to City Hall, Mary Calery, the HR department, to get what our current costs would be, and then I monitor that monthly to see the bills, because they can change day to day. If anyone that, even if open enrollment is at one period, if anyone loses their job, we have to take them onto our health insurance, if their spouse loses their health insurance. So, I monitor, monitor it. When I looked, you know, it has increased over the last couple of months. But again, I based everything on the Munis history, and then I projected out the highest bill for the next seven months, which is exactly what you should do in an accounting sense. And when I gave you the report, I did emphasize that normally, I would never say, take this $150,000. It could change. We could have five more people added over the next seven months, but in this case, we're trying to take wherever we can to close this gap. But, never did I know that they would charge $750,000 at the end of June of dental costs to a health insurance line. I had no way of knowing that, so yes. But luckily, the city CFO did read the report in time, and I'm able to bring this to your attention now and not, if he had not read it, we would find ourselves in big trouble in June when the transfer is done. So, these are the type of things that I learn daily as we go.
Ms. Nada.
Going forward, I assume now that we will be adding that into the next budget?
Yes. If you want to look at things as glass half full?
Exactly.
Everything we're learning right now, it's a hard way to learn things, but you can, I mean, I'll stop the next budget process as soon as this one is done, and you can, all of these things are going to be very clear in my head. So, any questions on the health insurance?
That had to have been in the budget for previous years, though, right?
No.
How did we pay the dental bill in 2017?
Well, it seems that, based upon the documents from Munis, they did it as a journal entry at year end again, and it wasn't in the budget. I guess it was...
In those transfers that we hear, okay.
And those 531 transfers that we approved at the, at the end of the year, somewhere in there was a journal entry to pay the...
To clarify, there are two types of transfers that occur with finance. You could have a budget transfer that has to come to you. That's when you actually approve me moving money from one account to another, and that shows on, you know, on the books. There's another type of transfer called expenditure transfer. And what that is, is if we mistakenly charge one account, you wouldn't request money moved, you don't need this, you need school committee approval to move money from one account to another. But if you make a mistake and charge one line, you move the expense. So, that's what happened here. I'll give an example. This is standard procedure for them to do it if it had been in the budget, because we have grants that we're going to hit with our health insurance. Right now, the health insurance just hits our local budget account. Right now, the health insurance just hits our local budget account, and then we'll make the transfer by doing an expenditure transfer. So it is standard, um, procedure. It's just that it wasn't in the budget.
Mr. Hoi?
I just had one question. Uh, when you, on one of these sheets, it says additional suggestions to present at the next meeting? And like, the sped tuition, four hundred and fifty thousand?
Yep, that's my, can I, I'll move on to that if no one has that, any questions with the health insurance.
Okay.
Okay, good. Um, the health, I mean, the out-of-district is a lot more, um, volatile than health. Health may change here and there, but special ed tuition changes constantly. And this is why I thought it's very important for you to have a monthly update. One thing I've changed, um, since I started, is I think it's important for you to know how many students we're servicing, what the tuition is, you know, not just what an amount is hitting in account. So the last time I gave you a projection, and I said that special ed tuition is going to be a lot more money than, um, we thought, that's because it was twelve point three million last year, and, um, they had cut it drastically. Well, when I received the tuition, it was ten point eight million dollars from the special ed tuition department. This time, it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars less. Now, even though that's great news, to me, I don't want to have great news and find out it's a mistake. So that's why I keep every spreadsheet that I, um, or ev, all the information that I get to build a number. I want to be able to come to you and say, "This went down by this amount because..." So just so you know, I questioned special ed when I saw this great news, to make sure that it was accurate, and two, to be able to explain to you what happened. So I'm happy to say that they were able to justify the decreased, the expected money that we're going to spend. The big decrease was because of three main areas. One, the special ed director and the, um, evaluation team chairpersons. They're making a committed effort to place kids in the least restrictive environments while still giving them the best education possible. And by doing that, they were able to bring several more students into the district, not necessarily to the day school, but to even the LeBlanc School. So they brought several students in. We went from a hundred and sixty students to a hundred and fifty-one students. That was based on the last meeting I had. That changes all the time. So the other thing is the district support specialist for homeless liaison and the staff council. They are implementing systems where we track the fiscal responsibility of a student. If we don't track it, a student could leave our district and no longer be our responsibility. But if no one is catching that, then we continue to pay. So they're working so hard to make sure that all of these cost savings are caught and able to help us. Another way that we're saving money is our special ed administrative assistant, who monitors the circuit breaker money, is, she's incredibly impressive. She is, I'm going to say this, it might sound, but she's a pit bull. She goes after the people that overcharge us, and she refuses to let them charge us for an additional day. If she knows a student left on one particular day, and that organization or that, um, school charges us for a full month, she will go to war, and she'll get us, um, the savings. She refuses to pay the bills. So the four hundred and fifty thousand, even though it shocked me, it made me happy, but it shocked me. I verified the numbers. We, we reduced our student, um, number by like eight or nine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then if, yep, sure.
I just want to say to the committee that, you know, we're, we're presenting this, but we also know that our special ed out-of-district tuition could fluctuate. But we're also really cognizant in doing everything in our power to keep people in front of children. So if we, we may need to come back to you, and we want to be totally honest with you. We may need to come back to you and say, "Well, next month, we've got this many students who are, who, you know, need to go out." But, but at this time, we feel pretty confident with the numbers that have been, um, shared with you.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I do emphasize that all the time. As accountants, we usually do build in a buffer, as I explained with my original, um, discussion on special ed tuition, that usually you take your existing tuition list and you multiply it by five percent. I mean, you increase it by five percent because the tuition goes up by that amount. And then you add in any kids that are currently being evaluated. As the superintendent explained, I am giving you the number as of today. I could come back next month, and it, it could look like a roller coaster, because I could come back and we might have five placements from DCF, or kids that, um, moved into the district that needs, um, out-of-district tuition, um, out-of-district placement. But I'm going to be as transparent as possible, and every time that number fluctuates, I will be able to say to you, "That's because we added five minus six," or whatever will be. I'm actually tracking the number of students at each of the schools and collaboratives, so that I can show you. If I ever had to break it down and say, "This, this school costs forty-five thousand dollars, and we just had five students move from there," you'll have that on us, you know, the data available.
Ms. Doherty?
So given the volatility of that, does it make sense to count that four hundred and fifty thousand towards the gap we're trying to fill? I mean, it kind of offsets the six hundred thousand in dental costs, but what happens if we get a student tomorrow that has to be sent out of district? Then where are we going to get that money if we don't have a buffer?
You're absolutely right, and no, it does not make sense. Everything I'm suggesting right now is very risky. I don't, I would never recommend this type of stuff, knowing that it's volatile. It's just that we have an impossible task of closing this deficit. And unfortunately, because accountants do usually build buffers in, and usually there is some extra money, because you have a retiree that leaves the district and is replaced by a much cheaper stu, um, employee, things like that, usually there are savings, but in, right now, I'm not doing that. Right now, because the deficit is there, and it's big, and it's a number, it's numbers, right? Because it's there, and I have no idea how to close it. We, we don't know how to close it without hurting students. So that's why I'm just being as honest as I can with you, saying here, "Let's take everything that we have from that line, and I'll come back to you two months from now if we need to make cuts, because we get five additional students." Our goal right now, we know that it's risky, but our goal is to minimize the impact now, because what if we made those four hundred and fifty thou, if we left the four hundred and fifty thousand in that account, and then luckily, we didn't, we, we didn't have any additions, then we would have made four hundred and fifty thousand in cuts that were unnecessary. So right now is not the time for buffers at all, you know, so. But if no more questions on that, I'll move on to the other suggestions. Um, the next item was, um, leader, the next savings was leadership transition savings. That's just from all the transition. Then the next item is eye-ready assessment. We had a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget, but because of everything that happened with the procurement process and all of that, the principals agreed that they have used other assessments in the meantime. And so to pay that much right now, when we're already halfway through the year, it's just, it seems wise to not do that at this time, even though they do like the product. The next, another very risky area to cut is subaccounts. No, we do not want to cut subaccounts, especially being that we spent over eight hundred and seventy-four thousand in excess of the budget last year. But if we cut it, um, this is something that we can monitor too, like we will with the tuition. What I had, I did an analysis, and I did see that we're at the same point this year as we were last year with day-to-day subs. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm long-term subs, but in day-to-day subs, we are sixty thousand dollars less. And that's because after the paraprofessional project that we, um, implemented, we are now watching and enforcing what we're allowed to get a sub for. Obviously, if we have preschool students, kindergarten students, or special ed students, and they have needs, um, or ratio needs with the paraprofessionals, we'll replace those with a sub. But the other ones, the floaters, we're not going to replace. We also know that we had thirteen additional paraprofessionals on the books that were not in the budget. Instead of cutting those, we thought we'll offset this sub, we'll have them serving the sub roles to help bring the sub budget down. So that was one of the other ideas. Any questions?
Discussion.
Okay.
Continue.
Okay, great. Um, there are STEM lead stipends that we would normally pay. We're freezing that for now. PLC stipends, which covers things like PBIS and other trainings. We were able to find grant funds, um, to cover that instead. We have met with the principals twice to discuss what their, we wanted their input. We wanted to see what we could, you know, what they would work with us and do. Instead of saying to them, "We're going to take your, see, the funds that were given to you for the CTI, um, using the CTI funds for student activities or, um, professional development." We just agreed that a hundred thousand dollars prorated according to school size would be a better way, and they all agreed to that. They didn't, some of them, you know, if we wanted to cut a position or cut certain things, they chose to do this, where they get the, they get to choose what, how we're going to do it. And then the last thing I wanted to point out is, we did add sixty thousand back in, and that's not enough to cover a full-time HR director, but for a half of a year. We just felt like we should consider that after the HR audit results, and after, you know, knowing that the hiring season is coming and the compendium and all of that. We thought it would be wise for us to put that back in there. So though, the original sheet that I shared with you would have closed the remaining one point one million dollar gap. But now that I had to correct the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings to health insurance and add the seven hundred and fifteen thousand back for the unexpected dental, we're back at having an eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar gap still. I don't have any other suggested areas to go to on, in the budget. The only thing I even could think of is that we did get a grant. It was five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, and it flowed through the city. And the city explained to me that sometimes when things go through the general fund, we just have to request it after. And it was a, it was a technology grant where they, um, it was done a couple of years ago, and we had to match the funds. So it was, the school department had to match the spend, and it was a commitment by us to match some technology funds. There's a memo in your packet written by Jay Lang to the Department of Ed committing the match. It did occur, because we did obviously match those funds, because the money was given to the city in February of two thousand eighteen. I just don't think that we, um, knew to go and, um, ask them for it. So I recommend, if I could.
Ms. Doherty?
I think, Your Honor, so that is the last paragraph of the first page of the new information you gave us tonight. And the very last page is a copy of the memo, um, about the grant. So I would ask that if you could please, uh, forward this information. If you, if, um, I'm making this in the form of a motion, that the administration prepares a memo, or however you want to do it, that, uh, informs the city council that this five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, I believe based on that memo, was, uh, the city received five hundred and fifty-three thou, two hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-six cents in February of two thousand eighteen, uh, for this grant that really needs to be forwarded to the schools. This is money that, it deserves to be in the schools. It was a grant, we matched the funds out of our budget. And I would ask that if you could have this sent to the city council and put on the agenda for next Tuesday's meeting of the city council. I, I think there's more money we need to ask the city for, but we definitely should be getting funds that really belong to us. And I, I think we've talked before about the E-rate money. Could we include that in the memo too, or no? You think we should just focus on this? All right, we'll just start with this. This would go a long way, and so make that in the form of a motion.
Seconded by Mr. Dakota.
Okay, and, um, one other thing that we, we have no choice at this point. Uh, as I want to clarify that budgeting, pushing money or an expense forward is just not good accounting. But at this point, I almost feel as though I never thought I would say this, but if we, I think we're getting to the point where we're going to have to add that sick leave. We're going to have to do that backwards, um, push it forward type of thing, unless we find another solution. Because I did implement new systems with retirees where they start notifying me. And we had fifteen people within one week. When I said I wanted to be notified of all the retirements, so that it flows through me, and I could make sure that they're not, um, being delayed through, um, you know, lack of processes and all, it was also a way of me knowing, "How much buyback are we going to have to do? And where, where will my savings be when I budget for new staff next year?" And in one week, fifteen, so fifteen retirees that we'll hit this year. So I already know that when, you know, the, the seven hundred thousand, if historically we spent one point two million dollars a year, I know, I, I've, I think that we're going to spend that this year. But if you already approved it at that, in that manner, we may be forced to do it to close the gap.
All right, need a roll call on this, on the motion for us.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Through you to the superintendent or assistant superintendent. As of right now, I thought that, my, I, I thought that the two point four million covered that five hundred thousand.
The two point four, we had not taken out, we had not added back, I mean, we did not take the, I added the five hundred back. So the two point four million included me adding that five hundred.
Back in, okay.
So now we're saying that we might be forced into taking it back out, which I don't agree with.
Okay, so my, my question is, actually, if I'm looking at, at what you presented tonight, if the city pays us the five hundred and fifty-three thousand that they owe us, there is a line item that you presented to us at the last meeting for tutors that is a million dollars, it's one million and twenty thousand. You propose taking two hundred and ninety-three thousand out of that. What I'm saying is, we take another three hundred and fifty thousand out of that, and we get the five hundred thousand back from the city, that covers that eight hundred thousand deficit. Because we already have a five hundred thousand dollar deficit, structural deficit, because of the food service account for the next four years. I voted against carrying over that five hundred thousand. I'd vote against doing it now. I, I hate to cut tutors. However, I'd rather cut tutors than classroom teachers. And if we reduce that account, we still are able to do some tutoring, but that three hundred thousand plus the five hundred thousand covers our budget and, and makes us whole, for now, anyway.
Madam Superintendent, then Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Um, the, the tutors that are in our schools, um, many of them are conducting all of our interventions, to, that support students who are struggling, um, uh, working with them directly on reading skills, et cetera. So, um, we count that as direct, we look at, when we were looking at the budget, we were looking at that as direct service to our children. And so we were trying to keep that, um, as whole as we could. And that's why we recommended to you the cutting them out during the December holidays, and then shortening their time at the end of the school year by one week, um, which would give us those costs. We can, we can certainly go back to our school leaders, but that was, our, our thinking was, who's in front of our children, who's providing the direct support?
We, my, my concern is, we know we have a five hundred thousand dollar structural deficit in the food service account that we can't charge in direct cost to. We know contractually, we are obligated to go up next year on salaries, and we know health insurance has not gone down. So, uh, unfortunately, you know, I, nobody hates the term having to, you know, live within our means or live within our budget. But we, we unfortunately are being put, we have been put in that position. And, and so, you know, I, I know nobody wants to make this cut, but at the same time, we can't keep kicking it down the road.
Ms. Doherty?
I think, Your Honor, I, uh, I think that there's a whole trickle effect with the tutors in that one-on-one opportunity our students need, in terms of behavior, in terms of our scores, in terms of the learning, in terms of the support for our teachers and our parents in the classroom. I mean, it affects the whole district. And so I'd like to go back to what we have coming from the city. Because look at the Medicaid reimbursement, okay? Look at the work, now I know the city pays for many of our nurses, not all of them, right? Not our special education nurses, um, but they take that out of their, um, maintenance of effort, right? Then we go through filing the paperwork to get the Medicaid reimbursement. What is that amount? Because we're not getting that, and we used to get that. Because we're not getting that, and we used to get that, right? Can you tell me what that is, just what the amount is?
I, I don't have the figure, but I know, I think it's close to a million, and maybe, I didn't realize that we did not already have that discussion, so it's good for us to have that discussion, because Medicaid reimbursement does not just reimburse us for the cost of the nurses that the city pays. If you look at the application, it, we add speech pathologists, autism specialists, other support specialists for special ed, special ed monitors, which are all coming out of the school department's budget. So if we're paying for all of that, I think that most districts, and I didn't realize that we didn't do that, that's a good point, but I think that we should speak and find out what the, what the shit thing is.
My, my point with this is, and I really, like, take offense to this whole idea, live within your means, that's like saying to somebody, you have $10, live within your means, you can eat or you can have heat, because we have a job we're trying to do here, and I would say it's essential to this city's progress, and this city has a responsibility. We need to work together, I really do want to work together with the city, and I understand that there's a lot of financial concerns they're facing with the, the maintenance of the buildings and all that, and I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm saying, let's work together. This is money, like the money from this grant, that we got coming to us. We need it to educate our students, so I'm not willing to look at going any deeper into these cuts like our tutors. We've already looked at trying to be very efficient in managing them without bringing it before the city, and I know I had a motion earlier that asked for a memo that talked about this grant money that came back to the city in February. I would like to add to that motion that include the information about the Medicaid reimbursement, that that information goes out to every city councilor and the city manager, and is on the agenda for next Tuesday's meeting, so we can have a fair discussion. I'm not saying you have to give us all of it, but give us half of that million in Medicaid reimbursement, make a nice round million so we can fill this hole and start to move forward, because I agree with my colleague, I don't know how, I voted to push that 500,000 forward, I regret that decision, I do not think that's the way we should go. We're going to be behind the eight ball for the next four years paying back the food service money, so I would, I would appreciate a second on that, and just include in that communication to the City Council and on the agenda, the information about the Medicaid reimbursement, that's fair, to ask for that money is fair. Thank you.
That'll be part of the motion. Mr. Nutter, then Mr. Howie.
My concern is, the longer we wait to make any type of cuts to settle this budget once and for all, the harder it is going to be. It is much easier to make the cut, and I, I don't say it's easy to make the cut, I don't like cutting anything, but if we make the cut, then if we get money back from the city, then we can put it toward that, or put it toward what we needed, but we have to balance this budget. It is, we have, you know, a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this city to balance this budget, and it's, you know, December, we're going to be in January of the next year pretty soon. We need to finish this budget so we can get on to the next one.
Mr. Howie.
I kind of believe what Jerry's saying is, Mr. Nutter's saying about cutting something like tutors, that might be the thing, I'm not sure, but I have questions too, like a certain. Coaches, they're called, in schools, and I'm not sure if we have curriculum coaches in our schools too, I'm not even sure of that, but I know we have math coaches, correct? And I would just like to know sometimes, what do they do? We should look at something like tutors, math coaches, maybe one of those two places are where we're going to have to cut. They're not directly in front of a student. I'm not sure what a math coach does, I'd like for someone to really tell me, to be honest with you. But since he brought up cutting tutors, I think ma, math coaches and curriculum coaches should be looked at. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Martin, then Mr. Dakota.
Thank you very much. I think that I would agree certainly with, with some of the statements my colleagues have made, is that moving forward with this 500,000 structural deficit makes no sense right now. The reason that I think we were willing to take the chance when we first had this conversation was, we didn't have the full picture of what we were looking at. You know, making a, a decision about a 500,000 problem and pushing it off to the next year is one thing, but doing it when we had no idea that we had a, a food service, you know, $2 million problem there, we had, you know, the, I'm not going to go through the litany of all the different things, but we were, we were functioning in a different environment. So I would agree with my colleagues that I don't think it's wise at this point for us to continue, for us to kick that can down the road, so I think we do need to deal with it, and deal with it quickly. My concern is, I mean, I think we could all sit here and throw out, you know, get rid of that position, do that, do, I would, I realize that we're under a time constraint, but looking at our January meeting as an opportunity for the administration to come up with some kind of tiered options for us, gives the administration time to talk with principals, talk with teachers, and decide where, this is going to be a very painful cut, the worst of, of, of any that we've made during this whole process, and I would like for us to be able to do it with the full participation of the, of the experts, of the administration, and again, of the frontline principals, teachers, and, and other administrators. So I think that rather than making a move right now, we would be better served if we kind of gave ourselves, again, we're talking about a difference of, of four weeks, so I, I think that that would be a better way to do it. I certainly support the other act, the other recommendations of requesting the, the funding from this past grant and, and everything else, but I think in terms of recognizing that we need to make a very painful cut right now, to just kind of be firing off different options, I don't think is the best approach. I'd much rather take that extra time and be able to make, you know, again, give us four or five options, let us debate, and then go from there.
Mr. Dakota had.
Thank you. I'd just like to follow up with my, what my colleague, Mr. Doherty, had to say, I'm not sure everyone out there listening is aware that the, the city doesn't do the actual application to Medicaid for the reimbursement, that's all of the school department staff that does that, and so I think that's, it's even more incumbent upon us getting that money, or at least part of that money, I would think, so I just wanted to add that in, back into that, in support of my colleague.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Ms. Martin's comments, because we have, we have those tiered, tiers approaches. We, we have presented to you tonight what impacts staffing the least, and so then we have option two, option three, those are things that we've talked with our leaders about, those are places where we don't want to go, but we certainly will be prepared to share, share those thoughts with you.
Mr. Nutter.
Are you looking for a vote on this 2.4 million tonight?
No, I think, I'm, I think I'm hearing from the committee that, that they'd like to see additional options. We can bring those forth to you at the December, the December 14th, 19th meeting, and then at that time, if the committee so wishes, we can either vote to have a special meeting where Ms. Turner can provide you with the actual budget for you to vote on, but I think it's important for you to have all of the information that we're, we're entertaining at this point, and that would afford us the opportunity to have some more information from the, the audit, and in addition, some of, some more time to talk with the city.
With that said, first of all, the committee's given me some issues to bring forth to the city manager and the city council, so I'll have that done this week, so the city council and the city manager will see it next Tuesday. We have the meeting of the 19th in which we'll be getting the audit report. Then, you know, I think the administration needs some time, and you've also asked for subcommittee meetings prior to the meeting on the budget, so I think that would be something I would ask every member to attend, the budget meetings, to discuss those issues, but I think the more information the school committee has at this particular time, and I think by the end of December, we'll have that on the table, and I think for, for us, the first week in July, so to speak, I mean, June, January, we'll be able to push in.
Please not July.
Yeah, but you know, you know what I'm saying, I've said, we've, we've asked for a lot of information, we've gotten a lot of information, but we want to be sure, and I, I think Ms. Martin said it best in the sense of, what we'll do is, we'll be consistent in what changes we make, we'll know what we can do or can't do. I mean, how does, in other words, just to take this information, the report of progress, and then, but we'll have to address all of those issues that have been raised, and information that you want from the city council regarding Medicaid and other, other grant funding and what have you, so that, that could make a difference, somewhat of a difference.
Do we want to vote on those motions?
Well, you, you gave me the motions, you, you made, you, you, those were motions, there was a motion that, I think we had everything.
Yeah, you voted on the motion.
We voted them, we, yes, we approved the motion. It's going. And, you know, I've asked a clerk to ensure that she works with the city, the assistant, the superintendent tomorrow, and work with my, you know, my secretary, so we can put everything on the table tomorrow afternoon to make sure it's before the council on Tuesday night. Are questions that have to be asked of Connor Baldwin or the city manager, you know, for information to be provided on the 19th? I think that's what the will of the committee is at this point. Okay, so I just need a more, are you finished with the report?
No, I have two more thing, two more quick things. One, the other part that I wanted to remind, update you on is internal controls. We are implementing internal controls, and we were, we have overpaid a couple of people in the past, where, due to lack of a system between the schools and central office, the attorney has gone after those people, and we have collected most of a couple of the people. But anyway, we're implementing systems so that the schools have to give us some form of document to, for us to, you know, verify before we start doing an automatic payroll. I met with the school clerks today, and we have identified a better way of doing it. We were doing sign-in sheets, which are very messy, we're going to use an X-2 report that the principal and the clerk will sign off on, so that we have two, dual signatures. That's one way. The other idea that we came up with for the floating staff, sometimes if they leave and we don't have them down in central office, we don't know when they've left on maternity leave or come back and things like that, so we do need a system for them. We need to implement internal controls, but we also don't want to hurt or add more burden to the people that are out there. I thought I had a solution with the raptor in, raptor out system, but it was becoming difficult for the school clerks, they had to stop all the time, so we think we came up with a, a good solution today, which is to have a sign-in sheet separate from the regular visitor sheet and separate from the building staff. If we have this one sign-in sheet that a floater can sign in, they're quickly signing in, they don't have to wait in line with the clerk, but we still have documentation that will help us do our, I mean, complete the payroll with documentation, but without causing them undue inconvenience, so we think we have that. We're also implementing monthly reconciliations and other financial oversights between the schools. Accounting is all, accounting is all about separation of duties and having checks and balances to avoid problems. So we are implementing monthly reconciliations that we share with the schools on all sources of funding, and they'll, we had a meeting with them today, and we said, we don't want you to just look at it, check it, and throw it in a box, this is your opportunity to make sure that we're all on the same page. We gave them a bunch of different internal controls that I could share at the subcommittee meeting that you requested, and the other item would be the human resource changes, and more or less that's just monthly verifications between the school and central office, make, you know, one of the issues or one of the recommendations in that HR audit, it's, it's great. I, I didn't think of it myself, but it's just not affordable, which is to have each school have an HR liaison. Well, we don't have that luxury right now, so what we did is, we had to come up with, what's the alternative? So we're going to create a monthly, I mean, a HR summary change sheet. It's easy enough for a principal to say, I have two people out on maternity leave, three on FMLA, you know, two resignations, they can complete that and give it to us, and we can reconcile that with our HR department. So we're trying to find solutions without having the funding to do it, so those are my updates for now, and, oh, one more thing, miscellaneous, we did, thank you for the vote for the photocopiers, the schools are happy, they, some, most of them have photocopying services again. I also wanted to point out one other thing, transportation is another area that I'm going to update you on each month, because it's another area that I cut to the bone, but it could change. For instance, since the last time I reported to you, we had 32 special ed students added and six that left. That's a net effect of 26 students since the last time I built the, gave you a budget. Luckily, because of the transportation director, he did some very strategic moves and placed students on different routes, and we were only forced to add one van instead of the many that we would have to do with adding 32 students, but anyway, I just wanted to let you know that I'll update you on the number of students per, for transportation as well each month.
Ms. Petoe.
I just have one thing to, through you, to, the CFO, I, I just feel everything that I read, the most important thing we have to do for you is get an HR director. That's how I feel. I think, I'm glad you're doing the job you are, but trying to handle everything with the HR too is, to me, is almost impossible for you. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I think as a school committee, we really got to focus on getting an HR director in there immediately, so, thank you.
Thank you. Are we all set?
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to accept this, the report of progress by Mr. Nutter, and seconded by Mr. Dakota. Thank you. Next, we have a vote to accept a grant of $20,000 to Lowell High School from Silicon Valley Community Foundation, I need to accept, motion to accept the grant award of $20,000. Motion to accept by Mr. Howie, seconded by Mr. Dakota, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Ms. Lai?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have permission to post a school safety coordinator, any discussion on this? Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. I know this seems kind of erratic at the time when we're faced with a, a budget crisis, however, this is a grant that we were awarded in early, late summer, and our staff have worked with the city to coordinate the budget, and part of that grant affords us an opportunity to hire a much-needed safety coordinator that was part of our safety audit, and it was a recommendation. I think that safety audit did provide a good premise for us to actually receive this grant, so we worked with the LSAA, and we present to you the coordinator position, and we ask you to consider allowing us to post this position at this time. It is grant-dependent.
Which was going to be my question, how many, how, how long do we have this grant or?
It's a, President, it's a two-year grant.
Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Nutter, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Ms. Lai?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, next we have a budget transfer of 154,933, Madam Superintendent, Madam CFO.
Do you want to present?
The transfer that is listed, you already approved these four items two meetings ago. When the city received the additional Chapter 70 funding, it automatically went into the suspense account, so a vote that night was not sufficient to move the funds, I actually have to do it in a transfer format, so it's simply the photocopier, the, you know, the four items.
And a motion to, cleared by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Dakota, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Ms. Lai?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We have two conferences, I'd like the motion to approve these two conference requests, motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded, seconded by Mr. Howie, roll call.
Okay, communications, we have letter of appreciation Lowell Fire Department Chief Jeff Winwood, retired firefighter Larry Finn, and local eight fifty-three. I need a motion to accept the place on file by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Nutter. All in favor? Thank you. Then, professional personnel, UTL sick leave, the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate two sick leave days to Nancy Renee Hill, Lowell High School teacher. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Howie. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Ms. Dela?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Before we adjourn, one, we have, City Hall has their Christmas party next Tuesday, and it'll be from four to six. We will have some schools and some programs for children, and we encourage everybody to come and visit. It'll be a nice day. Mr. Dakota has a couple of announcements.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two events happening at the high school coming up. They have a performance, the drama department is putting on a Christmas carol on Friday and Saturday of this week, and that, those performances are at seven, and on Sunday at 2:00 PM, all of the Irish Auditorium. And the winter concert, the winter music concert is on the twentieth at 7:00 PM, and a self-plug, St. Margaret's Church is doing a cantata thing on Sunday, the sixteenth, at 3:00 PM. Everyone is welcome, it's a free concert at St. Margaret. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, I'm sorry, Mr. Nutter?
No, I wanna get my plug in, as long as we're here.
Yes.
WCAP, we're doing our annual radiothon this Saturday. As part of the radiothon, we were fortunate enough to be able to get the World Series trophy, which we'll- we'll have on display downstairs at Cappy's Copper Kettle, and you can come in and for a small donation, get your picture taken with the trophy. It'll be there from nine to eleven, and we urge everyone to come on down. We also ask everyone to tune in and give us a donation.
How much do you expect to raise?
Our goal this year is two hundred thousand dollars to benefit the Greater Lowell Salvation Army.
Thank you. Mr. Howie?
I just wanna say congratulations to you, Mayor, you beat Ed Kennedy on the mayor's musical fest with the help of all the new committee members and CTI. What a great job.
You know what he did, I mean, he-
No, it was just a great time.
He threw out the challenge, and we had to meet the challenge, so.
Yeah, well, I'm hearing you blew it away by about seven thousand more, so.
It was a good night.
Nice job.
Okay, thank you, thank everybody, all the help. Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Howie. All in favor?
Excuse me?
Yeah?
No.
No?
Have you taken them?
You take it? Janine?
Janine, I sent you a one letter.
You know, I'm gonna-